Yeah, I think the only thing I had to add to it was we need to post the Devil's Lake Management Plan on the website for public comment and with plans of...
Oh, the one that was updated?
Yeah. And then with plans of keeping comment for a month and then decide our December meeting, adopting it.
Is that all we have to do is post it on the website?
I think so. It's not that long, I mean it's...
Good.
I'm thinking we should post it on the website for public comment.
From what I know, he's good.
Not sure. I may be back in time, but we'll see.
Oh, okay. I'm here.
Okay, alright. I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the October 11th Business Meeting of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. Let the record reflect that all directors, Brown, Kathy Kramer, Norris, French, and Sexton are in attendance. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Alright. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed. Consent agenda is adopted. Next, we have comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. We have one person signed up, Mark Christie. Good evening.
Glad I could make it. It's been a struggle here the past number of months, but I've been working hard, so, working behind the scenes still. So, as the president of the Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We're working on scheduling an annual meeting coming up here before the end of the year, so we will get that out on our website and also on the, our Facebook page, on the Navigator page. I've been occasionally updating folks on the Navigator on the progress of the aeration that you guys are, I think are on the agenda to talk about tonight. Took a few more pictures today on my way to the meeting and it just, it's exciting stuff. I know our membership is thrilled with the water quality this year. It's been, you know, I've been coming here for forty-five, fifty years and in the last, I'm gonna say ten to fifteen years, it's the best clarity in the water and I think water quality that I recall, definitely over the last five or six years. But, you know, from what I experienced, we saw very li-- we didn't even see our normal algae bloom that's regional at all, so hats off to everybody involved in helping that to happen and we'll continue, I think, with the in-water aeration to hopefully ensure that that continues for years to come. So, just a shout-out to you guys and gals and an update on the Neighborhood Association getting together for an upcoming annual meeting. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I talked, I touched bases today with Noel Walker of Blue Heron Landing and his comments were in essence the same. He's never seen it in this good a quality at this time of the year and I asked him because I always like input from our residents and stuff and he said he had his second-best business year yet and he only attributes the second-best to the construction that went on in front of his place, that that probably impacted his business, but he's very happy with the water quality and what's going on. So, very good. Do I have any other citizens who'd like to comment prior to the board meeting that weren't unable to sign up? Alright, then let's go on with committee reports and do we have a sewer committee report?
The sewer committee is still in a holding pattern until we get the Civil West Report back, which it sounds like, I got an email from Tom. Was there a date attached to that, Josh?
There wasn't a date on that one, but our engineer, Kevin, is getting with Lila and they are supposed to be setting a meeting right now.
So, it sounds like we're closing in.
Yep, that's it.
So, that was supposed to be available this month, but it's been delayed because we're still waiting for comment from the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so, we really expect that to take place and have that available next month.
We do.
Okay, great. Special projects. Anything to report from that committee, Bill?
The only thing I have is that we're going to coordinate with Josh on our whole lake aeration system and come up with a unproposed date at this point. Once our system is up and running, then we're gonna do a ribbon-cutting ceremony-type thing. But until we know it's come along enough to have that, we'll schedule it and we know it's up and running.
Alright, good.
Can you give us a report on the signage, too? I know we've been involved in signing the site.
Yeah, Julie and Josh have been working on a kind of a preliminary sign of, before you install the system and then as it's working, there's a couple of diagrams of how it works and they're, they're working on putting it together with some of our sponsors so that we can spread it around a little bit and get some interest and see if we can't add, you know, a little extra to it when we actually have the presentation, when the thing's in the water. So, Josh handed out a little flyer, I guess, with the sign and tentatively of what it's gonna look like. It'd be posted on our enclosure once the enclosure's finished, after the unit is installed and we know that we don't have to tear into it again. I'm not sure at this point how many signs are gonna be out there, other than posted at the site, so it may be on our website. I think Josh might be a little more able to fill us in on the details on that exactly.
Yeah, well, we haven't had a discussion yet completely. I would imagine we'll probably wanna go the direction of getting some of those signs up at at least the city parks and of course at Sandpoint where we have the boat ramp. And we'll definitely put this up on the website as well as get another whole page built as this project progresses. And once we get it in and operating, we'll be able to have that information together and we can follow up on the tail end and get a good report out there.
Okay. Anything else from the special projects? Nope?
No, I, I just wanted to reiterate about the Airstream unit that's working at Vivian's and it's still on. The fifteenth of this month, the dam will come out and we need to discuss at a later date if we wanna leave that in after the dam comes out because the water's gonna go down four to five inches unless it starts raining dramatically. So, we have to evaluate how long we want it to sit there. If it's gonna, the water's gonna go down far enough where it'll touch the bottom and then we might wanna think about relocating.
How long does it take the water to draw down?
About three or four days to a week.
'Cause, you know, there's...
Yeah, I think...
No rain in the forecast until the twentieth?
Right now, yeah, it just, it just crested nine feet after last weekend's rain and it's starting to go back down, so.
Yeah, I think this month, we've, we've only had about an inch and a half. Last year...
Well, it doesn't look like we're supposed to get much more.
No, and last year in October, we had seven and 7.38 at my house.
It does look like the end of the month, it's supposed to start raining, but I mean, that could change.
Right. And, and it can recharge the lake pretty quickly once those, once those rains come, so it's really a variable thing. Honestly, last year, at least at my weather station at my house, we had just under seventy-four inches of rain and the most rain we had was in November. We had twenty-four inches of rain.
Holy cow.
And so, had we not had November's rain, we would've been lagging substantially behind what is normal for, for our area. So, we're supposed to be in El Nino this year, so we'll see. Hopefully, we'll get enough rains to bring up the lake level and keep it healthy.
So, until further than, than the aerator, the Airstream will continue to work through the fifteenth?
So, Monday, we'll take out the boards and then just check on the aerator every day until it...
Yeah, yeah. Just monitor daily along with the...
And Bill, I'll elaborate a little bit during the project report, but I've got a couple of sites worked up where we can put that next that are actually right near Vivian's, so we, you know, we have a landing spot for it to go to next.
That have better depth than Vivian's?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right around the corner there to Crystal Lagoon.
Right.
Same spot, that's same issues, impacted. It'll actually be a little better, a little more interesting site than Horseshoe Bay was, because Horseshoe Bay worked really well, but it was more open. Crystal Lagoon just has that little canal opening up into it and then has those same problems in there. I went out there yesterday, back in there, and there was a little bit of an odor even still with the temperature where it is now, so it'll be, I think it'll be a good spot.
Okay, that'll be really helpful to them.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Save Our Shoreline, water quality monitoring. Mary Ellen?
Alright, a shout-out to Julie and Bill and Taylor for building two more floating gardens using, what, what did you use instead of...
Spray foam.
Spray foam.
Spray foam.
For the secondary flotation. Isn't that smart? Hadn't even thought of that. So, that's good, yeah. And I think one is, one is Tina's and then one is yours, so we have three in the lake now and we're just looking for a group that wants a fundraiser kinda thing to build a garden.
So, I talked to the Boy Scouts and they are very interested.
Oh, good, okay.
I, I, I don't think they can start right away, but I, both the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts are interested and the Cub Scout leader actually works for me. And so, he said, "Is it something Cub Scouts can do?" And I said, "I'm sure I..."
If, if an adult does cut it.
Yeah, for sure. And obviously, they're supervised. So, anyhow, it sounds like both the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts are interested.
Mm-hmm, great, great, yeah. And that gets, you know, flora in the lake and sucking up the nutrients. A new thing, I never rest. The Western Pond Turtle is on the low end of the endangered list. I haven't seen a turtle in Devil's Lake, but we have a good habitat for having a nursery and, and nurturing little tiny turtles until they're big enough to inhabit the lake. And we could take them off the endangered list. The Oregon Zoo is working on a project. I think Devil's Lake is the perfect area to...
We have one in our canal.
Do you? You have, you have a Western Pond Turtle?
It's a turtle.
Yeah, there's only two kinds of turtles, two kinds of turtles in these areas. The painted turtle, I don't know what it looks like, but the Western Pond...
So, I was told it was a pond turtle, so...
That's the Western Pond.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And it's an endangered, so take care of it.
Okay.
And we'll take care of some more. I just have to locate someone.
How do you take care of them? I'll figure it out.
Like, like an aquarium and a grow light on little ones and then a protected area.
Oh, this is in our canal. I saw it on a log.
Oh, good. Well, good, 'cause I didn't, I hadn't heard of any turtles around, so what we wanna do is kinda get the numbers up on turtles and I can't think of a downside to turtles in Devil's Lake. So, that would be a good little animal project for, for Devil's Lake. Any questions?
Also, amphibians, too, would be frogs if we could...
Well, I hear a frog last year. Yeah, yeah. For about the first time, maybe the second time since I've been in my house. The frogs could be, could be nurtured. I don't...
I think there's a lot of frogs.
I don't wanna nurture a frog.
I've heard a lot of frogs, yeah.
I'll nurture a turtle. Somebody else can nurture a frog. There's, we have a lot of frogs. I don't know if they're in the lake or in the grass around.
Yeah, but we used to have them at night, you know, chirping away and I haven't heard them for years and years, so we need to grow those back, too. But I don't think they're endangered. It's the Western Pond Turtle that's...
Cool.
So, look it up. Steve looked it up and found it interesting, so. It's very interesting. The Oregon Zoo just started a project to nurture Western Pond Turtles and so it's a big thing to get in on that and I think we can get some grants even for it, so.
We have a pretty floracious predatory cycle here. I'm not sure if little turtles would do well with the birds.
Well, we'd have to protect them and, yeah, until they're a little bit bigger, yeah. But they, they live for fifty, seventy years, so that'd be kinda interesting. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, Josh, this is, the next section is your project and operations. I think there's several things you wanna fill us in on.
Yeah, I've got a really good update this meeting. Everything has been on track and great, so you're probably gonna get tired of listening to me by the, by the end of this page, but our conservation aeration project, the lake bottom system we have going in, is moving along very quickly now. Pacific Power has the power pole in in the service at Water Avenue. The trench for the power connection was completed without an issue. The compressor base is put in right now. We also have the, Justin Green Line Electrical has put the rack in and installed it with a meter box and lines are in. We are literally just waiting for John to arrive and he will be coming on the 22nd. John Tucci will be here. His crew will arrive on the 19th. The truck is finishing being packed right now and will be on the road tomorrow, headed our way, so. Excellent news there. The Devil's Lake Video Monitoring Project is almost complete.
Can I just, just one, one quick, maybe, information that we could share with the public is, how long does, does John expect it will take to install everything and get it up and running?
Approximately seven to ten days is the estimate for the install and working and he will tune everything out as far as the manifold and flow rates and make sure everything's working, but he does plan on, and we discussed that at a previous board meeting, I believe, that he will make a return trip at some point, just to check on things and train us out on anything additional, 'cause Bill and myself, I'm sure, will be working with John to find out what we need to do to operationally take care of that, so.
Alright, thank you.
The video project is ninety-five percent complete. Thank you very much, the owners of Vivian's Restaurant, whom have helped us and allowed us to use their restaurant itself and their infrastructure and their internet lines and power and ground and everything. Wonderful people helping us out with that. The only thing we're waiting on right now is the internet itself to get it streamed in. We need to see if we can use their internet or if it's gonna be too burdensome for them. We don't wanna crash their POS systems or anything, so Jim Dewey and I have been kinda hit or miss trying to get a hold of them outside of business hours, so we can take care of this, 'cause we don't wanna interrupt their business. But once we get that done, we'll have those images out on the website, so we'll be able to point the cameras around and get a little better view and kinda play with it a little bit. And the hopes is that this is gonna be a precursor to maybe a couple more and I know we've kinda discussed here and there that it'd be a decent idea to maybe get one out near the air compressor and everything at Sandpoint for, you know, safety and security reasons. Up on the north part of the lake is equally as beautiful as the south part of the lake, so we'd benefit from having some up there. I spoke with Noel Walker at Blue Heron Landing and he's more than willing to host a couple cameras up at his marina as well, so.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, once we get these first couple working and hot, which is very soon, we'll continue on with that project as well.
Josh, can you give us, just, you kinda explain what we're doing, but for the audience?
Sure.
Can you tell us why we're doing this, what our objective is?
Sure. A few months ago, Devil's Lake Water Improvement District applied for a Safety and Security Grant from the Special District Association of Oregon, our governing oversight body, and that grant was approved. They approved us for a fifty-fifty matching grant of up to $4,000. So, that means the district puts in $4,000, SEO will put in up to $4,000 as well. So, we essentially get the project for, for half price. We are, we have purchased a couple of FTP cameras, which are made specifically to shoot an image directly to a website or an internet page, and we are installing those right now in the south part of the lake at Vivian's. That was the best location we had to be able to get internet and everything without having a huge additional cost put in. And once those are connected to the internet, they're fully installed at the moment on, on the post and pole and ready to go, we'll have live images of Devil's Lake worldwide.
So, the two cameras, one's actually pointing out to T-River and the other one will point into the lake?
Currently, the one right now is pointing into the lake and of course, the lake bends down there, so we don't get a shot all the way up the lake, but it is, you know, very picturesque scenery that one's gonna pick up. And then the one to the south, if you're correct, is gonna be shooting down over the 101 Bridge in the D River.
Great, thank you.
And Bill mentioned earlier the Airstream Pro and gave a little bit of an update on its current activity at the moment. We do have two potential new sites. I briefly mentioned those as well. One there at Crystal Lagoon near First Street, which is, you know, gonna be an outstanding location for us, I think, to get that in there, 'cause it's close and it's heavily impacted with sediments and I noticed a few kinda, you know, that decomp odor that you get with a lot of plant material and stuff that's, that's stagnant. So, it could certainly be a great location to put that next. Also, I've been approached by the Carol Wolf, the HOA manager at Indian Shores, and they have a very similar issue with their canal as well and their property owners. They have a lot of sedimentation. They have some decomposition and things going on in there as well. So, the fourteenth of next month, I'm going to attend their HOA meeting and just share with them our experience using this aerator and then some of the successes and not successes that we've had with these projects, so.
I was thinking, when we were talking about the Crystal Lagoon one and how that canal is basically shut off currently. And when I was a kid, it actually, like, flowed.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering, is there an HOA for all those homes along the canal or a property?
It's different. Crystal Lagoon is not on First Street.
Oh.
It's right behind the dentist office. It's just like a little keyhole.
Oh, okay.
There's one outlet.
Okay, gotcha. So, okay.
What you're talking about, that's the First Street Canal.
Right.
Yeah, the one, the one that goes around. Now, that's one of them, too. I'm sorry, that could be confusing. The, the First Street Canal is one area we would, we would like to put it eventually, but we also have Crystal Lagoon location as well now that we're...
Oh, okay, so two different locations.
Yeah, that we're looking at, so.
Sorry, I, I thought it was one location and you were referring to. Well, with regards to the canal, I'm wondering if it wouldn't benefit those property owners to have a full-time one kind of at the mouth of the lake and the canal to have flow in that canal all the time, 'cause I think if you got a, one of the big ones and put it in there all the time, you'd have constant flow through that canal.
It certainly could be an option and that's, that's definitely on our list here to get it in that canal.
Yeah, I'd be really interested to see if we could get flow all the way around there.
I think we were, we were looking at the possibility of talking to the city about a power unit at the pump station.
Right.
Or not far from the pump station.
Right.
And we got positive results, so just a matter of following through with whoever in charge of the city department.
That's, that's a great idea for a future project and, and some grant funding as well, especially if we can bring in the city on something like that and do some good with them, too.
Yeah, 'cause they have that perfect location for it. Nothing else can go there and, and there's power there.
Yeah, yeah, power's, power's what we need for that thing, so. The D River Devil's Lake Sediment and Debris Control Program is what we've coined the issue with the millions of cubic yards of sand that have built up for the past fifteen or twenty years down the D River outlet. We are circling the wagons, basically, and starting to set up some meetings to get all the stakeholders and everyone involved together and just start the conversations. You know, first, of course, everyone will almost instantly recognize that it's an issue and then we can, we can move on from there and start to get some solutions out on the table, especially when we bring all the stakeholders together. There may be some other ideas that they come up with. They may have more resources available they're willing to throw in on a problem like that that we just don't know yet, but we, we are on the way to finding all of that out.
Can I ask, who, who's all involved in that and when, when are we, when, I know that...
When are the meetings?
Yeah, when are the meetings, because one or more of us, I'm sure, would like to attend, 'cause we have a vested stake in that as a board.
Yeah, we are looking for the end of October or into November at the moment right now and some of that is, you know, we're at the will of the city and some other organizations when they're busy at the moment. That's what we've ran into, but some of the other organizations would be Lincoln City, who'd be Lincoln County. It's gonna be the hotels around there. I don't remember all of them. It'll probably be kilos as well, being on the D River. You know, essentially, anybody that's connected or could stand to benefit from that or is impacted by that at all. State Parks, I'm sure, will be another one that'll be interested in there as well, so. As well as some of the regulatory agencies. Now, at what point we involve them, I wouldn't imagine we're gonna do that initially until we start to a little bit more of a formation, an idea of what we want to do and how we wanna do it.
Can you see, once you get that group together, can you see, see the board in the communication there so we know when the meetings are great?
Absolutely, yeah. That is not a problem, yeah. Our water quality briefing, I mean, we've already kinda been talking about that, but the testing results indicate that the DO levels are rising already, which is really great, so we've already hit that break pretty early on in fall. Part of that has been some things that we hadn't completely correlated yet, but decreasing temperatures in the water column seem to maybe have some direct effect on that. And that's something I learned about as well when I went to the conference. The clarity continues to be outstanding. I've seen a little bit of, like, green algae and a little bit of streaks out there midlake. I haven't seen anything really conglomerating in any of the bays or anywhere like that. Visibility is outstanding to the bottom and through the water column, so we can't hope for much better than that. Other than that, everything has been wonderful with that. I haven't received any strange reports or anything, although I'm hearing some very, some ramblings of another sea lion. Please don't tell me there's no sea lion.
Oh, I don't think so.
I haven't, I, I haven't noticed anything.
Okay, good, but...
But if you hear of one, I know that was mentioned by somebody.
I think the river's too low for seals right now.
Right, right. They, I, I think she came in last year, the first of December and went through the end of December, so if she's, we could, we could expect to see that, if that were to take place again.
I hope she doesn't remember.
Yeah.
I could do without Leona McSea Lion this year.
Okay.
That is all I have for projects and operations.
Josh, I have to go, but can I comment on Angel Tree? I'm happy to help with that again.
Okay, okay, cool.
New business. It's a relatively short meeting tonight. Thanks, Tina. Angels Anonymous event, do you wanna give us a little brief on that?
Sure. It's something that I don't think the district had typically done before, but we decided to last year. It's a great community involvement event. You know, it gets out there to a really good local charity, which is, of course, what we are. We're, we're local government. It's always great to support in that fashion directly. Everyone seemed to have an outstanding time with it last year. I believe we, we picked up two full tables and the way that we did it is, you know, all the board members or committee members purchased their own tickets to go, which was very nice. A lot of our board members, I know Steve and Nancy donated a ton of merchandise and things from their stores that went to our tree, fetched a really good prize, too, so we did some good there. The event itself is great. It's one of the very few events where we get to dress up in Lincoln City and all socialize and be nice, so. I just wanted to put it out this year, since it was, everyone really enjoyed it last year, and see if anyone wants to be involved and if we wanna decorate another tree and, and participate in the event.
When is that event, Josh? Do you have dates?
You know, I can find out really quick.
Must be in December.
Must be in December, since it's Christmas trees.
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact date this year.
Is it the first of the eighth? I see nineteenth annual. I'm just trying to make sure this
says 2018 on it, not 2017. It says December 2nd on this posting that I see. Well, this must be, no, that's 2017, yep. They didn't update their Facebook page yet.
So, it's that first or second week probably in December, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was a good event last year.
Me, too. And it was fun helping decorate, I think. Everybody enjoyed it.
I, I, I personally would vote that we participate again this year. Any, any other comments from the board? I was at the event. I didn't, didn't decorate the tree or anything or donate anything, but I was there.
It was fun.
Yeah.
I think the exposure in the community is good.
So, do we need a motion to support a tree?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
So I'll make the motion to Devil's Lake Water Improvement District to sponsor a tree.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Very well, we'll support another tree this year, very good.
Excellent, thank you.
Josh, if, yeah, if you could get that date out.
I just looked, December 1st.
It is December 1st.
December 1st. And then look online because they have about two or three dates and some times to decide for decorating the tree and as it gets closer, we'll all kind of get together and go take care of that, so.
Very good.
And also along those lines, if anyone, now is the time to start collecting donations for the tree. So, last year it caught me off guard, you know, I had about two weeks beforehand and I needed about two months. So now we've got about two months, so let's, whatever we can get, or if we know any local businesses or friends or anything, let's see what we can get together for charity.
Very good. You attended the Oregon Lake Association Conference?
I did. It was a great conference, they had a lot of good information out there. I learned a few things that I didn't know were available for us. And I learned some things that were very consistent with the decision of the board and what management has done here the past two years. So it was very refreshing to get that support and that validation that we are definitely on the right track with what we've done. And one of those things is having good equipment and having a monitoring plan in place before we approach a project like an aeration system. That came up multiple times through several different sessions and they had several pictures of our XO2 platform on the screen. So I was pretty proud that we had chosen wisely there as well. But the importance of that was underscored as step one and we have certainly locked that down as far as a monitoring plan and have even in the past as far as E coli and everything. So we definitely know the ropes on that. Made a few new good contacts, a couple of state regulators and some private firm people as well. So have a little bit more information sharing with some other lakes and some other bodies of water and see if they have any experience that we can gain from and if there's anything we can share with them to help them as well. I saw a few vendors and spoke with them there, just looking forward to the future as far as things like muck reduction and other issues that have came up in and around the lake and lakes in general. And a lot of that stuff right now is still a little bit preliminary, I think. And what I ran into asking them questions if they had passed any type of EPA testing or anything that validated it so it was safe for fish and wildlife, and it was pretty sporadic. There was a couple of them that said they hadn't done any testing whatsoever, just that it worked. And a few of them that said that they had had, you know, a consultant or a plan here and there or one state regulatory agency, wherever state they were in had approved its use or something to that effect. But that's something I think as a district, we kind of need to keep an eye on here. It's a difficult situation for us, of course, having, being tasked with the protection of an endangered species in our lake, so we have to be so careful about the options that we choose.
So was there any state representatives at the meeting?
There were a couple there from DEQ and ODFW. But they didn't have a discussion about the product, unfortunately. It was mainly legislation that they were speaking about.
Where was the meeting at?
It was at the Doubletree Hilton in Portland.
Did you find out anything different?
About, well, a few things. The main thing that came out of it was, and this, they even had sections on climate change, so it was very broad and comprehensive as far as problems and issues that they discussed. But there is quite a buzz right now on a state and national level with HABs, with a lot of these issues that's happened. And the water master for Salem was there as well and of course, you know, vocalized that he is not happy that they had to be kind of a poster child for what happened to underscore the importance of needing state funding and needing federal funding to deal with these issues. But realizes that that may have been a little bit of a spark, especially in our state, to get some more movement from our legislators. And I know on our level, you know, our board members, committee members and residents always talk to our state representatives and are in constant contact with them to let them know what's going on on the lake and what we need and, you know, what problems we're facing every day.
I think it's critical that we maintain that relationship with them, just so we have, you know, real good exposure and then our story to go along with it, that's crucial. All right, thanks.
Very good. Other new business from the board?
Josh, can you give us an update on the Ducks Unlimited?
Ducks Unlimited at the moment is not looking like the grant cycle for 2018 is going to work out. They had to get some information together on their end and I do not think they pulled it together in time. They were supposed to notify me when they finalized an LOI and it has not happened, so. That's not, that's only one grant opportunity we have through them as well, though. There will be several others in the future that we can pursue. This particular one, I don't think is going to work.
Did we do any work for them for that or?
No, no. We were going to sign an LOI and draft some support letters and when I approached them and said, hey, you know, what's up? They informed me that they said that they, more than likely, were not going to be able to put in for this grant.
Okay. Any other new business from the board? I have a couple of things. First of all, I think it was on September 17th, the board met for a work session for their updated Devil's Lake Management Plan. And I know that Josh provided that to us as we went through and then updated that. What I'd like to do is, Josh, now that that's in a finalized form at least, unless we want to make any other further comments and changes, post that on the website, give 30 days, at least 30 days, time for the public to comment on it and then come next meeting, we'll have a reading of the management plan and then vote whether to approve that in our December meeting. Does that sound reasonable for the board?
Perfect.
Since we've got everything together and that will update what we're doing, then I think that's reasonable.
True.
So if you could put that on our website and I don't honestly know how to do those things, but I assume you do.
Yeah, not an issue.
And then have available for public comment so that we can move forward with that.
Sure.
All right. Second thing I had, as I spoke earlier, I told you that I talked to Noel Walker over at Blue Heron Landing and asked him how things were going and I know we park our boat there and he said that seems to be working out great for him. One of the comments that I, one of the comments he had was, well, if it starts raining, then do we have a bilge pump? Because it starts filling up. And he said, it looks like it's setting a little low right now. So I guess my question to you is, do we have one in there and that's working?
It does, it has an automatic bilge pump I had installed at the beginning of the season this year because it was a mad rush to get out there some mornings last year at Ann Valley.
I thought we did. And the other comment I had was, as I was thinking about that, I know that my boat, I've left it out through the entire winter before and it fills up because it drains back and then comes in the exhaust areas. And there's a lot of water that gets in there, even with a cover on it.
Yeah.
And so I was wondering, do we need to purchase a cover to put over that to help protect that as we?
We already have one.
We do have one?
Yeah, Bill and Julie already gave me a good supplier and I have that ordered and ready to put on, so. And, you know, the rationale behind that is we're going to try and keep it in as long as we can this winter, as long as it's usable with its size limitations and continue sampling throughout operating the aeration system and have it available to get in and out if we need to, so.
Well, and I think it's going to give us a good idea. We have in our budget possible funds for a new boat and I think this year, through the aeration project, we'll go out and see what that little boat can handle. But I think we're going to probably end up with something a little bit more stable in the next year or two. We'll see.
Could be, okay.
Could be.
Yeah, all right. Well, I know we have the funds set aside, so that's a good thing, so, all right. That's the only two things I had. Any other new business from, or non-agenda items from the board? Josh, do you have?
I think I've beat it up tonight.
I guess my only comment would be, when Tucci starts to arrive and set up, I'm about a block from there, so. If somebody had let us all know, the board know that, hey, he has started and we can at least be around.
Yes, I, real recent conversation with John I had yesterday morning was that, yes, he will be here. The equipment will show up on the 18th or 19th and then he'll be here on the 21st, 22nd. But he was real adamant about wanting to know what my schedule was and then he is going to need a shuttle person, so I made two people aware of that and Tina's, Tina's mentioned that she can have a guy on call, basically. So as long as we know when the work's going on, everybody can participate if they want to, if they have the time. Because he will need, he'll need help. And then the other thing is familiarization with the system and what do we do when it has a hiccup. So, one of my concerns is, what's the procedure to change out one of the airstones, which seems to be one of the only things that I can think of that would go wrong, where somebody would drag an anchor across it? Or, you know, who knows? That's about the only thing I can think of.
And I talked with John a little bit on that, Bill, just for the reason you're saying, so we can get us a good little training program together. His suggestion was to think about purchasing 12 additional airstones to have, so you can take 12 out, drop them in as you go, go back and clean those on shore and then bring the other ones back out. The rationale behind that is, otherwise, the way they normally do is with a pressure washer on a boat. And he said that can be an issue sometimes, getting that set up. But otherwise, that's the cleaning process for them. They pull them out, they hose them off with a pressure washer and clean out the pores and put them back in, so.
Did you hear a price on that?
I did not, I didn't talk about the individual diffusers yet, so.
Well, I think that's a good discussion to have when he's here and I can't imagine us needing to clean them immediately, but we can certainly, in our November meeting, address something like that if we need to purchase that.
John mentioned usually annual for cleaning was what they recommend.
Annual?
Usually.
Okay.
So Josh, we, oh, I'm sorry if I interrupted, just wanted to do...
See if we could have one available for our December meeting.
I'm sure we can get one in here. Yeah, because we're going to have a couple of spares anyway. We're not going to just get just 24 airstones and then John's going to leave, so. He's going to leave us some extra fittings and some, you know, hose and repair stuff and I'm sure we'll have a couple extra diffusers. You may need a couple of people to drag one in, I don't know if they weigh, but, probably not that, I mean.
Any other comments, Steve?
Josh, it's the 11th and that's a week away that we'll start seeing equipment here at the lake. What plans do you have to contact the media as far explaining to the residents what's happening in the lake?
I have a press release prepared, I'll be sending that out Monday. I've already kind of pre-talked to Jeremy with the NewsGuard and Justin with Lincoln City Homepage. And I believe our last review, we talked about getting out to that other news publication that you guys?
Capital Press.
Capital Press, I've got the link, so I plan on releasing it to them and the News Times. Essentially, that's, it's just going to be a very brief summary of what's going on. The NewsGuard has covered this up until now even, I believe their last story was maybe three or four weeks ago on it. So there has been a little bit of anticipation building already, so we'll just complete that explanation and narrative and get it out to everyone. And then also we'll invite them back for the ribbon cutting and everything, of course.
How about Mark, the Neighborhood Association?
Yeah, we'll get something out here and again, I've been posting, kind of updating things on the Facebook page.
Okay.
I'll get that over to you.
Josh, we had also talked about notifying city council. And I think we, as a district, need to personally send a letter from the district that it's happening and invite them to come out in view at any time. We had talked about tours or any interest. You may even want to reach out at the state level, representatives and senators, to see if it's something that they would like to see happening, actually the project happening, especially since what happened in Salem and coastal lakes are having huge issues out there right now with algae. And I'd like to think that we're ahead of the curve on a healthy lake or what we believe is going to keep a lake healthy. So we want to make all those contacts, I think, and open invitation.
Sure, not a problem. Along those lines, if there is anyone in particular, governmentally or otherwise, that anyone would like to be informed or include on that, just let me know through email or text and I will make sure they get that list.
I think we brought it up the other day about the county commissioners, if you have to have a notification avenue through us that...
And former board members.
And former board members.
Yes.
It's imperative the public knows that, it's just not this board. Prior boards have done a lot of groundwork to see this project happen and we just want to keep them in the loop.
That's something I could use a little bit of assistance with. I have, of course, like Brian and David's contact information, but anyone really preceding the last board, I don't, I'm not sure I have their contact information.
You know, if we could get the board members' names and such, I bet you Shirley could help you.
You go.
She tends to know everybody.
She does, yeah.
And so, and I'm sure she'd be happy to do that if we could, if we just locate the names, because I honestly do not know the names of previous, all the previous board members, so that'd be great. Anything else from the board, Steve?
Just have a question for Mark Christie.
Mark, would you step up to the microphone, please, so that people in the audience or on the TV can hear you?
So a question, Mark, goes on the Navigator, is that the website for the Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association?
lakeoregon.com is the actual website for the Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association. The Facebook page is, if you go to Devil's Lake Navigator, it'll pull it up, but Devil's, or dlakeoregon.com is where you can, all the information on the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, I've been a little unclear on responding to people that question how to get onto that website because they always, they refer to that website as Devil's Lake Water Improvement Board.
Right.
So...
Yeah, so there is a little bit of a commonality in name there, but I'll shoot everybody that link again so that you've got it. And Josh, and I can't remember because I haven't looked at your website lately, but I'm assuming we have a link, if not, it'd be great to have a link on there to the Neighborhood Association.
We do, I've got it in there under our partners, I believe, in the section.
Okay, I thought you did, but that's another thing, if anybody needs to know, go to the partners' link on the Water Improvement District Board's page and click on that. And I know that, once Mitch, because he's getting, he's down here now, he and Dana, but he retires, I believe, the 1st of November. I think that part of it, because he really is the brains behind the updating and so forth. I do kind of the Facebook thing a little bit and he does, he does that. We'll go ahead and that will, I'm sure, be updated and there'll be a lot more information on there.
So the name of that is the Navigator? That's not a website?
No, no. No, no, no. The DlakeOregon.com is the official location for the Neighborhood Association.
Navigator's the newsletter.
Right, it's correct.
All right.
And while I'm up here, if you don't mind, shout out to Steve. He pinged me already, so you've got your first donation. I believe we contributed, the Neighborhood Association contributed last year to that great Christmas tree program. And Steve asked again, and we're excited about partnering up and participating. So, this is my plug for all the other great folks around that contribute to that for the Water Improvement District's Christmas tree. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Bill and Julie brought the best toys last year for the tree. I just kind of said that.
If there's no other comments from the board, do we have any additional comments from citizens present on agenda or non-agenda items?
Miles Schlesinger, Lincoln City. I'd like to stress that you do make contact with the city council, but also the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, actually, and the Lila Bradley and Stephanie, so that they can see the work that we've done over the last three years, because I feel that it's going to be successful, and it has been successful already. And we've got to get those people in our corner so that they help us in cleaning the D River and restoring that area. It's good for them, and it's good for us, and it's good for the city. So, I'd like to be able to say to the Planning Commission, the aeration system is going in, and Noel Walker will take us on a cruise of looking at how they do it, if you're interested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Miles. Any other comments from citizens? Board comments? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for all for coming.
Thanks.
Exciting time?
Yeah.
I'll never with that camera.
No.
It's pretty close.
I sat there, I know.
Hey, I'm good.
There you go, your screen's cracked.
I'm good, I'm good.
Never a good thing.
Well, good.